Really, Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. And we just thank you for another year, Lord, that you've provided for us to do for the students of this community, Lord, who are just asked that you lead and guide us on everything that we say and that we do, and that we do what's best for the kids of our district. Thank you for our staff and faculty. Thank you for all of them and each of the hard work that they put in, Lord. Thank you and forgive us for failure in these things asked in your name. Amen.
We'll go ahead and get started with tonight's public forum. It's so that we can report our first rating. And it's first rating we received for the 2018-19 school year. This will get complicated as we go through it. So the rating we're going to talk about tonight is for the 18-19 school year, based on the fiscal year 17-18, and we're reporting it in the 19-20 year. So, a lot of fun. I'll do my best not to make it any more complicated than that. So, what is the first rating? Or what is... First stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Essentially, it's the accountability system that deals with our budget. You know, the state wants to tell us how well we did on student scores. They also want to tell us how well we did on handling our finances. So that's what the first report is. And essentially, districts submit certain financial data to TEA, including your annual financial review or your audit. And when we submit this information to TEA, they are the ones that create this report and send it back to us. And again, every district in the state of Texas goes through this. And part of the requirements for the first system is that you place notice in the paper, and you have a public hearing to show this information. So again, the purpose is to ensure that school districts will be held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. And also, any accountability system you have is also looking to help you improve. It's going to give you information so that you can prove on that performance. All right, this is the fun part, the timeline. So in August 2018, that's when the 2017-18 budget closed. And then in January 2019, we had our audit for the 17-18 fiscal year. So that's when the auditors were here and gave their report in January 2019. The same month, probably the next day, is when we sent our audit. We filed it with TEA. August 2019 is when we get our report for the 18-19 school year, based again on the 17-18 data. And then here we are, September 2019, and we're doing our public hearing for the 18-19 first rating. Those advertised for public hearing. Okay? This was published in the newspapers, September 11th and 18th. As I share this information with you, other things that go with the first report or certain disclosures that we are required to share in conflicts of interest, and we'll get through that stuff as I go. This information's also listed on our website under the Business and Finance tab. So the first rating is based off 15 indicators. The first file, we call them critical indicators. That's because if you don't have all the yeses on the first five, you automatically fail. Okay? So the first five are such was the complete annual financial report, the audit, and data submitted to TEA within 30 days of the January 28 deadline. And that was a yes. We submitted it January 24th. So indicator one was a yes. Indicator two A, was there an unmodified opinion in the audit on the financial statement as a whole? Yes. And that was, these were our auditors for that year, Val Harris-Pahcheck. January 28th is the date on there, because that's when they were here giving the audit or reporting the audit to the board. So we have a yes. Two B, did the external independent auditor report that the audit was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting compliance for local, state, federal funds? Yes. Again, Val Harris-Pahcheck on the 23rd. Three and four on the same slide. Number, indicator three was, was the school district in compliance with the payment of terms of all debt agreements at the fiscal year end? Yes. Did the school district make timely payments to the Texas TETR retirement system, Texas Workforce Commission, Internal, and IRS, other government agencies? Yes. And indicator five, the last critical one, was the total unrestricted net asset balance in the governmental activities column in the statement of net access assets greater than zero? And the answer was yes. So, past the five critical, and so you go on to indicators six through 15, and that's where we get our number score. And so I OISD scored a 94 on all remaining indicators. I'm going to go through a few of those. Where we lost points was, there was only one indicator we lost points on. That was indicator six. Okay? Yes, Mr. Hurd?
What was the year before's score?
It was a 72. So we went from a 72 to a 94.
What was indicator six?
I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah, pretty good.
You'd have 20... No, 30. I'm not a math...
22.
22.
22 points. Yes, sir.
That's pretty impressive.
Not bad.
We didn't pay anybody off, right?
No, sir. That would have shown up in our audit. It might have showed up in one of the critical indicators. I wouldn't be talking about this night before. But thank you, Mr. Hurd. So indicator six, and I'm sorry. This is, I'll read it to you. This is what the indicator asks. This is the question, and then these are the points you're given for that. You can go online and pull up any district's first report. And all you'll need, though, is their audit. These numbers come from this, the audit that we submitted to TEA, where these numbers come from. And over here, in the left-hand column, is actually the formula, or how you would calculate this. So the question on indicator six was, it asked, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures? They take cash and equivalents, add current investments up here, then divide that by the total expenditures. And this line right here is facilities acquisition and construction, which we had none. So they added these two numbers, divided it by this. And this is where you come up with the answer to that math equation. And it was 50.27 was the math on this. You go down here to your scale, and you see where 50.27 falls. And it falls right here in this little area, which says greater than 6, or less than 60, greater than, or equal to 45. So this is the category we fell in with this equation, and we got four points. So that's the six points we lost for that year. And again, essentially, this goes to fund balance, all right? And we've known for a couple of years now that our fund balance isn't quite where it should be. So I want to take a few minutes just to share where that's headed, what direction that's headed in. So this information right here, the 2018-19 budget. So now I'm getting confused. I'm confusing you because I've changed years on you.
Because that, that was back when...
That was 17-18.
That was when Jones was at bridge?
That's when Dr. Jones was still here.
Okay, okay.
That was the budget he passed. Now I'm talking about the first budget I passed. And so you have revenue and expenditures or income, and what you spent. Projected on our approved budget was 4.7, or I will say 4.799. Okay? And actual, what we received, 4.732. So a difference of $67,000 there, okay? Negative. Expenditures, we passed a budget that had 4.736. We spent 4.515. So we're in the black over here by $200 something thousand, okay? So that's where we fell with our budgeting practice. But if you take this number, the actual revenue, what we got here, and the actual expenditures, what we spent, then you're talking about $216,672 headed the right direction to fund balance. Okay? So we're working on that. But I don't feel too bad about this, because this is a payment schedule that is from TEA. As you look down here, this says remaining balances. And the highlighted number there says 548,148. Little over half a million. And you see this says 9519. This is essentially the settle-up. We're still expecting this yet, okay? And this right here, this statement right here at the bottom, it says, "The allotment for Hiola ISD has been recalculated as recently as 919 at 3:41 PM." So it even tells you that Thursday they recalculated this. And it's still sitting at this number right here. Okay? So, again, talking about fund balance and the direction we're headed, these were the numbers on that other slide. It was the actual revenue, the actual expenditures, and that number right there. So that's what we kind of saved as we went through the school year. But this is that number plus that settle-up check. So we're talking about $764,000. That's, and again, read this right here, because please, when the audit's done, hopefully in November, if this isn't what went to fund balance, it's an estimate. These are estimated numbers, okay? So if you walk in and the audit has 764,799, please don't say, "Well, you said..." All those numbers are estimates. The budgeting process is an estimate, okay? But I want to share with you guys, looking at this information and going back thinking about indicator six, I feel pretty good about the number of points we're going to get on our first rating next year when it comes to indicator six.
What was it, Mr. Mardell? What was it, what was our balancing year before? Do you remember?
I don't have that, Mr. Hurd. Sorry.
What did we budget for that revenue from the state? Like, we had 500? Because, go back one more slide. So right there, it looked like we were right on, pretty close on our budgeted revenues. But we have an additional 500 on top of that. So we're going to be at like 5.23 million? What did we budget for that state allocation during this process?
I'm going to be on the slide 1-4, I think.
I've lost myself now.
It's included in that.
Yeah.
That budgeting column.
It's on TEA's slide.
No, that's why I'm asking, what did we budget? Because we're going to get 500 grand more.
We budgeted this right here. Well, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't remember what the state part of that is.
Okay, and that's what I wanted about the state.
Yeah, I don't remember the state part of that is.
Okay.
It was around 1-4.
I think it was around 1-4.
Can you go to the foundation page? Yeah, so...
Again, what this is based on, though, is a student enrollment number from, that was submitted over three years ago. So the state gets your enrollment number, and they do their budgeting process. And see, that's why we're getting this much more money, is because our enrollment...
So they paid the day, they paid us 9 points or 900 grand?
Yes, that's right here.
And we'll get another 5, so the 1.4 total?
1,515.
With the 1,515. And is that what we budgeted in there for revenues? Or did we budget like 1 million to get the extra 500 grand?
1-4. It was 1-4, it may be in here. Give me a second.
Excuse me, I'll go get the number.
Right here somewhere.
I'll make sure.
1-4.
1-4, 05, 132.
So that was in the 4-7 number?
That's 4-7.
Yes.
And so we've gotten 4.7 already.
From local, state, taxes.
And then we're going to get another 500 grand. So where did we make extra money?
About enrollment, special...
Well, no, the state's going to come in close to what we budgeted.
Yes.
So where did we make the extra money?
The local revenues.
Local revenues.
And we're about 500 grand over what we had budgeted?
It wouldn't be that much in local revenues. Plus, in taxes, local taxes too. Like, in the budgeting process, in the budgeting process, with local, just local general revenues, with property taxes, and with state, all of those are cushioned whenever we pass and approved a revenue. So they're coming from a couple of different areas. Local property taxes, probably got more than what we said we were going to get. Local revenue, we generated more than what we budgeted. And then with the state, you see the state's hitting at 1, around 1.4, a little bit over. That means we budgeted correctly, looking at what the state was going to send us.
Yeah, and that's great. That's why I was kind of curious, why we're so far off on our budget? If it's the local stuff, we got more in property taxes?
Pretty much nailed down. It's been $300.
And the budget was based on estimate, is that correct?
Yeah. Why can't it be a budget?
And there's always, the state's a little unpredictable. The tax base is a little unpredictable. So there's some, it's better to look at this with a lower number.
Yes. Especially if we've got to build our fund balance, then you're going to budget that way.
Especially without we got this, we were actually, we were over $52,000. We were over $100,000 on local taxes.
Okay, so you see where I'm coming out? We budgeted 4-7, but we don't realize 5-3. Or 4-8, we don't realize 5-3. If state was on, local property taxes was on, we had an extra 500 grand in other things that flowed in?
Well, not, not 500. So we're, oh, the state right there?
So I can see 100 grand here, 100 grand off the...
And 100 grand off of the local stuff.
So there's two.
And then, so we have to look through here and look at, look closer.
Maybe help if he had the sheet.
Yeah, so it's like 100 grand probably on each thing. It's kind of where this extra 500 is showing up from.
Yeah. You good? Okay. So, moving on. Indicators seven, eight, and nine is where we lost points last year also. So I wanted to make sure I shared those with you, just to let you know that we got all those points this year. The indicator question is, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover the short-term debt? So they take current assets, divide it by current liabilities. The math on that was 4.4682. And look over here, that's greater than or equal to 3. So we got 10 points. Indicator eight. Bear with me, I'll read all this to you. It says, "Was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency?" But in parentheses there, it also says that the school district's change of student and membership, students and membership over five years was 7% or more, then the school district passes the indicator. So I'm going to go ahead and tell you, it was down here that we got our 10 points, because they took our enrollment of 2018, 2018 enrollment of 501, divided by our enrollment, enrollment of 2014, which is 462. So subtracted those two numbers, divided it by the enrollment of 2014, and that came out to be 20, or it came out to be 8.44%. And the thing it says it was over 7%. So the math down here equated to more than 7%, the answer's right here. So we got 10 points in that indicator.
Mr. Mardell?
Yes?
Where would we be on the other aspect of that question? If it wasn't for the 8% growth, where would the other numbers come out? Just here, out of curiosity, in the points ranking?
It fell there, it fell there in the six-point category. The math on that was .7647. So it fell down here in this range of greater than .7, less than, or equal to .8. And indicator nine. "Did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures?" Revenues exceeded our expenditures. That's kind of a, all 10 points, or none. We were, we were all.
Either of the negatives?
So, and that's what happened last year. We didn't have indicator nine correct, and there's no gap there. So again, our number rating for this year is a 94, which equates an A or a superior. The other disclosures, I'm going to quickly read this, because I'm going to go through each one. So superintendent contract, reimbursement for board members superintendent, outside compensation for superintendent, gifts received by superintendent board members, and business transactions between district and board members. But they come, they are numbered in specific. So disclosure one, superintendent contract, it is posted online. If you go to our top menu, you can select District. It's a drop-down menu. You'll see Superintendent. You can select Superintendent. And towards the bottom of that screen is my contract, or link to my contract. Disclosure two, reimbursement received by the superintendent board members. And this has to do mainly with travel and so forth. Again, this is based off 17-18 data. So that's when Dr. Jones was still the superintendent here. You can see how much he received in travel reimbursement. Then each board member did not do any travel or receive any reimbursement for that. Disclosure three, outside compensation and/or fees received by superintendent for professional consulting, there were none. Disclosure four, gifts received by executive officers of board members, and there were none. And disclosure five, business transactions between school district and board members. And there were none. And so those are the five additional disclosures that come with the first rating. Again, tonight's first rating is our score for the 18-19 school year, based off the 17-18 data that's presented in the 19-20 school year. Were there any more questions? I think we kind of answered them as we went along.
Isn't that quick?
Yes, sir.
Basic question. So it's great to see the surpluses. How is that money treated going forward? Is that just basically as a savings-type fluff account? Or is that only going to get put into next year's budget? How does that work?
It will roll into, it's, we call it fund balance. Essentially, your savings. It rolls into savings, which we're required to have a certain number of days or months in savings. Essentially, worst-case scenario is if Armageddon happened, how many months can I pay I OISD employees?
What is the goal? Or what, is there a certain, specific amount of time that you, that you prescribe for?
I believe the state requires you to have two. Our current goal is three. My personal goal will be four or five. So we'll see. But yeah, that goes into what we call fund balance in your personal finance. It'll be your savings.
So where are we, like, on that one, you know, like, where are we at?
Well, our bills...
Two, three, or...
Our bills, what we determine usually range about 410, or about $410,000 a month. So that's payroll and all bills. So you're talking about, what, 1.2, between 1.2 and 1.3. And right now, as of last audit, our fund balance was a little over $700,000. We put another $700,000 in there. Then you're looking at 1.4, then we probably meet where our goal, where we're supposed to be. And I think that has to do with a lot of prayer and the good Lord, because normally you can't fix your fund balance in one year. And we've been blessed enough to do that. So, yes, sir?
Do you or any of the board know how we stack up against the other school districts with this particular rating?
No, sir. No. There is, on TEA, there's a report that will tell you, like, how many districts in the state of Texas, and it breaks it down that way. I mean, you could go to each individual district if you're curious about our local districts, and the information's there, so... In this issue, we're not crazy enough. So this year's data, we were just starting the 19-20, 2019-2020 school year. This data will go through a, it's the same rating system, but there's going to be five, no, six new indicators. So it'll be 21 total indicators that rate this year's budgeting process. Three of those six pupil projections. So last early spring, I had to submit to TEA what I thought our enrollment would be for the next two years.
Go to Vegas.
Right? And I'm going to get, I'm going to get...
Thank you, Martha Parker.
They're going to let me know if I got that right or not. That's going to be part of that. So, and then there's a calculation they have that will be looking at three-year change in fund balance. And obviously, ours is in the right direction. The direction needs to go. But we still may take a hit here, just so you know, because we've had large growth in fund balance. And so they, in the calculation, it may, we may lose points because they say, "You didn't spend enough." Well, I'm trying to get us, to make, get us to a safe place. So, and then this year, variance budget versus actual revenues. Again, it will kind of boil down to, I think, what Mr. DeHaven was talking about. You know, how close were our actuals to what we budgeted, I think? So, that'd be interesting. But again, you'll have to, if this is 2019-2020, that report will be in 2022. So if you all make reservations, now.
So, Mr. Mardell?
Yes?
Kind of on that same idea there. In a further timeline, say five years down the road, and we keep doing well with our surplus, and we keep adding to our savings, and we get to that four-month or that six-month, or even a year of flow. What is the long-term plan? How, I mean, obviously, the whole point of a budget is it to be equal on each side. So how, what do you see happening, you know, two, three, four, five years from now? It seems too often that entities say, like you just said, "Well, we're not spending enough." From a personal standpoint, I don't see that we have to spend that money as the answer. Is it a possibility that comes off the other side, off the revenue side? Whether that be, you know, heaven forbid, any say tax decrease or anything like that?
Well, and that's part of the reason we want to make sure we're growing our fund balance while we can.
Right.
You know, this year, we're budgeting, the state of Texas says, "Here, you get all this extra money, but you have to do X, Y, and Z with it." And we're doing X, Y, and Z with it. There's no guarantee that extra money's going to come the next by any. So you want to make sure that you budget correctly now in case the next by any, we're not funded the same way. So that's where we'll go. If things continue to head in the correct, in the same direction we're in, which was amazing, one of the things I want to do this year is start a facilities committee. But we've got to start looking at small projects in the district that need to be taken care of. But it's not going to be Mr. Mardell going around saying, "We're going to do this, and this, and this." We're going to have a committee of community members that say, "You know what? I think we might need to work on this or improve this." And that's where we'll have some of that extra money. But it will have to come in through the budget. So that's where some of it will go, is just improving our district. But we want to make sure, we don't want to get too crazy with it until we see the next by any. Because teachers deserve more money than they even got this year, and we want to keep giving them something. But once you give teachers those salaries, their salaries are there. We can't take it back. So we want to make sure we're giving teachers as much as we can, but also planning it safe for future. We all know what the future looks like, so... Right now, the main goal is to get our fund balance where it's supposed to be. And there's a real good chance the Lord blesses with doing that in one year. And we kind of expected that to take you two or three years. Okay? All right? Yes, sir?
Does Grimes County have a growth forecasting part of their, you know, part of the county process? Do they have like a future studies or a future, or a futures forecast? For instance, you know, what kind of impact will, what if they leave subdivision down on...
King Oaks?
King Oaks, or some of the other possible areas that are probably going to...
King Oaks or some of the other possible land deals that are probably going, but it's way above my pay grade.
I, I don't know if the county does or not. So some districts will bring in demographers to look at that information. That would cut into our fund balance, Mr. DeHaven.
I'm just, this is a question in the Grimes County.
In all honesty though, that might be something we want to look at and, and price out. That might be good information for that facilities committee to know. Just FYI, the, the number I submitted as our ADA was 503, but we're sitting at 535. There's no way I could have guessed that's, would be our enrollment.
Not taking you to Vegas.
So not much of a.
So did we go down this, how did our numbers go this year as far as our attendance? Did we have people leave or did we go up?
That's what I'm saying is, I projected that our enrollment would be 503 for the next two years, and we have 535. We increased by, from last year by, well, I didn't exactly tell you, 20 something, 20, like 24, 25, 26 students we grew over the summer. So, and I think we had an enrolling Friday. So your number there, because we put the board pack, we're circling the board pack together on Wednesday so we can get it to board members in time. So this enrollment number may not be a hundred percent accurate because we had them checking in at the elementary and the secondary Friday. So, and that number says 535, so it might be 537 right now.
I think part of the reality will be then, as people understand how dynamic this district is, they're going along with you. I mean, this is what attracted us. I knew this school district had a high rate. We heard about this from, at the chancellor's advisory board, football box. There were professors there who, Ms. Parker worked with, who told, who told us, come, I O L. Yeah. And so I, I wouldn't be surprised to see more of an outgression this way.
To clarify a little bit about the, the Grimes County appraisal district is the south end of the county is just blown up. And it's, it kind of caught the appraisal board, or not the board, but caught the appraisal district a little off a couple of years ago. And we, we just kept, we're under, we're under, we're under, and then all of a sudden the state came in and said, something ain't right. And so that's, we had a little issue with some, there was some issues with people, taxes going up because, I mean, because of the growth. And I mean, it was just crazy. It's crazy. You can really, you can kind of, Plannersville back in that way, Fort Montgomery County, it's, it's coming and just as this college station is coming on 30 and. So I mean, it's, the appraisal district kind of had to pick it up a notch, have to put it like that. So that's, that's another, it's a plus for us as a school district, so.
Well said.
That wasn't a lot of information.
No, it helps me understand a little bit, because I see, I mean.
Everybody's a little behind the curve.
Yeah.
I mean, if the area starts to grow and.
Back to your H E B though, I told somebody one time, they said something, well, they want to put an H E B down at about King Oaks and buy your groceries there. And I said, that's the whole point of I live here is because I want to drive 35 miles. I don't want a grocery store in my back, you know? This is why I live.
I'll put one right there at the corner of John Lys.
Go across the river and so that'd be fine.
Yeah, I was just going to, and it's along with Mr. Hood saying this place is growing and stuff like that. And we're going to have to tap into the capital markets at some point for a bond to, to expand and stuff like that. So stability on our fund balance is really key for S and D and R's when they rate that bond. I have to deal with that every day and even upswings can hurt you compared to the downswing. So I think we have a period of stability that benefits greatly.
I just want the record to show that Mr. DeHaven used the word bond and not Mr. Mardel.
You did not over that word.
I was drinking water when he said it.
If you need it, get bonds.
Any more questions or anything on the first report? Need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Tammy, second by Luke, the invader ready to hand, motion carries 6-0. Okay, we'll call the order regularly. There's nobody signed up to speak, so we'll move to item number three, consideration of the consent agenda.
I didn't receive any questions or email, did I?
No questions, so we're going to have a motion of the consent agenda. Motion by Dan. Here it is, Jason, we don't want to. Thank you, thank you. Motion by Danny, second. Any discussion? Does it favor? Motion carries 6-0. Item number four, campus and administrative reports.
Mr. Duski, will that ladies go first?
All right. So our attendance is sitting at 97.7% right now. Both campuses are doing an attendance competition. So every month, the Grand Ole has the highest attendance rate. Will get like an ice cream party, a popsicle party, some special treats. So the kids are getting really excited about that. And then at the end of the year, they get a special field trip. So the kids are brainstorming where they want to go. They're going to turn them into me so we can put it on their competition board in the hallway for them to see. We had September 3rd, we had parent orientation. A lot of parents came this year. September 6th was grandparents breakfast, and you can imagine with our growth what that looked like. It was, it was a lot of fun, though. It was a lot of fun. Today, the sheriff's office came and read to our kindergarteners. They were, they, they loved to come out and do that, so it was really neat to see them interacting with, with the kids. Again, because they came out September 11th, the Grimes County Sheriff's Office did, detectives did, and firefighters did. You know, of course, we had calls, you know, what are they all doing up there? But they were just welcoming the kids and being a part of our kids' daily lives. September 30th is going to be a staff development day slash parent teacher conference day for elementary. So in the morning, we'll do staff development with the behavior analyst. The teachers have submitted kind of their biggest concerns with behavior in their classroom. The behavior analyst, which is completely free of charge, they sit below, is going to analyze all those behaviors and comes up with different tips for teachers based on our biggest behaviors. And then we'll do parent teacher conferences after that. Something really special for our sixth graders this year, Mr. Fowler reached out and asked if sixth, if we were good with sixth grade joining in seventh and eighth grade dance. So that's really special, something for elementary kids to participate in. They're last year in elementary. They'll be November 16th. And then October 1st, Spark, which is from the A and M engineering department, is going to be doing demonstrations and different STEM lessons with third through sixth grade. So I'm interested to see how that goes. Thank you.
All right. So we've got a lot of wonderful things going on at the high school. Like she said, we're doing our attendance contest and we've, we've really kind of raised our attendance this year. So currently, I'm just going to kind of break it down. Our, our attendance in seventh grade is 97.71, eighth grade is 97.83%, ninth grade is 97.95, 10th grade is 98.43, 11th grade is 98.21, and 12th grade is 97.35. So that's our lowest one, but it's still in 97s. I think this last year we were in the 95 area. So our campus improvement plan had a goal of 97.5, and right now we are currently at 97.91 as a, as a campus. So we're really kind of, we're really doing well. Our contest, I think, is doing pretty, pretty good at encouraging those kids to stay. Athletics, we're doing fantastic this year. Our varsity volleyball is 30 and two, and the only team that they have lost to are to four A powerhouses, that's number two in the state, number three in the state. So those are the only games we've even lost. So our varsity is doing fantastic. JV and freshmen are doing just as well. They're 18 and two for JV and freshmen are 10 and two. So our girls volleyball is doing excellent. Our next game for girls, well, other than tonight, our next game for the girls is Love Lady on Friday, and that'll be here at Iowa. Football is doing really well this year. They're doing, they're three and one. We play Burton this Friday at, at Iowa, at here, so they're going to be a pretty good, you know, contest for us, so. But we've, we've been able to, you know, really fight and kind of scrap together, so I'm proud of the boys. Band, we have our U S band marching showcase on Saturday in Madisonville, so that's going to be their first kind of contest for the band. So our main announcement, so we have our open house tomorrow night starting at 6 o'clock. So tomorrow, we're going to do a separate rotation. We're not going to do a scheduled rotation. So we're going to do a little bit different. I know some people like myself have several children, so it's really hard to do that scheduled rotation. So they'll just go to, to the, their students, teachers as they can, which I think from the feedback that I've gotten, I think that's what teachers really enjoy and that's what the parents will enjoy as well. And then like Mr. Duski said, we have our teacher in service on Monday, and we'll have the special ed training for our pairs. We have Ms. Lauren Plente coming from the co-op to train them and help with some of those pairs. That's all.
They both mentioned attendance, so I wanted to share with you a little math with our 535 enrolled students. As a district, our attendance rate's at 97.85, so it has our ADA right now at 523. And again, the state budgeted us at 503, so we're already looking at a little similar for next year as well. Senate Bill 820 is another unfunded mandate, but they'll tell us you received so much extra money, it's funded. But what it says is that our infrastructure, our computer infrastructure has to be protected from cyber attacks. And there's some, some things set forth there. As a district, we've chosen Cyber Security 6, that's through Region 6 Service Center, to be our provider for that security. Ms. Hurst is our cybersecurity coordinator for the district. But Region 6 takes care of everything else, so part of that Senate Bill requires you to report to T E A if anyone attacked you. And actually what happened, the service center will even do that communication with T E A for us. Now, that's Cyber Security 6 is costing us right at $4,000. We went for an outside bid and we received one and it was $15,000. So Cyber Security 6 sounded real good to us at $4,000, and we're meeting the requirements set forth by Senate Bill 820. Speaking of another Region 6 service that we are picking up this year, it's financial forecasts from Region 6. What it does for us is calculate our state funding template every six weeks. So we'll be providing that information. It gives us a cash flow analysis performed monthly, so you'll get that as well. And then twice a year, we'll sit down with them and look at, make sure we're in compliance with M O E or maintenance of effort, which has to do with spending for special ed services. The main thing about it is a third set of eyes on our financials to make sure we are staying and doing everything we're supposed to be doing. So that cost was $2,000 plus a dollar per enrollment. At the time I submitted our application, our enrollment was 532, so that fee is costing us $2,532. I think it's well worth it. If you see Mid-South synergy working on any parking light poles over at the football stadium, there are two poles that sit kind of down in the gully there. I'm not sure what they're supposed to light up. And one of them actually has a lean to it for some reason, but we're removing those two out of the gully. We're bringing them over to the home side, and they're going to be set right there next to the parking lot, kind of where the handicap parking spaces are, the bulldog statue. They're going to be set right there and they're going to be on each night. And that's going to help us deal with that dark area there where some people like to hang out at night and over the weekend. We're going to have light there so they can't hang out in the dark anymore. And that may be the two poles we put security cameras on when we get to that point. So I just want to let you know, if you see them working on those poles, what it is, we're moving those. If you've noticed the field of weeds behind the football field house there, it used to be a practice field. Remember, we had a lot of dirt donated to us and they dumped it there, and we're going to make a, a nice practice field there. Well, that dirt work is going to be done. It's going to be started hopefully by the end of this week. So that will start looking nicer and we'll get that project completed. If you know Mr. Troy Wren, he's come to the district and asked us if he could sell raffle tickets at some of the school events. The reason for the raffle is he wants to donate money to research cancer in his father's name and Nolan's name, and he wants to donate scholarships to the school in his father's name. So I, I didn't see any problem with that. So Mr. Wren and anyone that may be helping him with that, just know that I've, I've given him permission. There's supposed to be no profit made by him. It's all on the cancer research or to our seniors in the form of scholarships. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Speaking of raffles, I want to thank, and if you see Kevin and Jamie Gressit, I want to thank them. If you haven't seen the Astros World Series autographed jersey, it's a Jose Altuve World Series version Astros jersey, and the MVP himself has signed it and it's framed. Mr. Gressit bought that at an auction and turned around and gave it to the district. And so what we've done is got with the Athletic Booster Club, and they're going to be selling raffle tickets for most of the fall, and all that money will go to the Athletic Booster Club. It's a beautiful jersey and it's something that I would never, ever be able to afford. So feel free to grab a, buy a raffle ticket for that. It's, it's, it's an amazing thing. So thank them if you see them. And last thing I have on my update is just a reminder, Thursday, October 17th, we will have our legislative update. We're going to join Navasota I S D at Navasota I S D Administration Building. I took the liberty of signing everyone up for the 5:30 meal. So the meal will start at 5:30 and then the presentation will start at 6:00. If you want to ride to get it from here, just shoot me a text or an email and we'll carpool, otherwise we'll meet there, their administration building. If you know where the Dairy Queen is in Navasota, it's right across the street, and that's their administration building. And that's all I have for superintendent's report. It's almost as long as the public forum.
Okay. Item number five, consideration of the district improvement plan for 2019, 2020 school year.
So if you remember, in August, we approved the campus improvement plans. Our district advisory committee met on September 11th to review those and put together our district improvement plan. I just recommend the board trustees approve the district improvement plan for 2019, 2020 school year.
Move to approve the district improvement plan for 2019, 2020 school year.
Second.
You write it however you want. Any discussion? Does it favor raise your hand? Motion carries 6-0. Item number six, consideration of parental involvement policy for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Yes, sir. Parental involvement plan is a requirement for districts that receive Title I funds. Again, this plan was reviewed by the district advisory committee. It's the same one as last year, hasn't changed the last couple of years. For the last couple of years, that committee has looked at it and said it, it doesn't need to change, but you still have to have your approval on it every year. So I just ask that the board approve the parental involvement policy for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Second. Motion second by Luke. Does it, any discussion? Does it favor raise your hand? Motion carries 6-0. Item number seven, consideration of nominations to the board of directors of the Grimes County appraisal district.
Just need a nominee to serve on that board. The board is, is, there's a couple of different organizations that make up that board, aren't there? Anyway, nominations are taken from different organizations. We have a nomination, Scott Neville.
I'd say.
All those in favor? Item number eight, consideration of the Grimes County Extension Office Resolution.
This is something we've been doing the last couple of years. Essentially, with this resolution, you are allowing us to count 4-H activities as, just as we would U I O activities, so that we count as extracurricular on attendance, for attendance purposes. So just ask that you approve the Grimes County Extension Resolution.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? Does it favor raise your hand? Motion carries 6-0. And item number nine, consideration of purchase of 2020 Charlotte's program.
This is an item that we budgeted for. We talked about it in our budget workshop. It was part of the budget that was approved. was part of the budget that was approved, just for transparency purposes, and it's a larger purchase. I wanted to share with you that we got three bids. We got one from Teague Chevrolet in Maybank, which was thirty-eight thousand nine ninety-eight. We got one from Caldwell Country. That is thirty-nine thousand three fifteen, four hundred dollars more than that one. And then we got one from Hinson Chevrolet in Madisonville. It was forty-two thousand nine point six. My recommendation would be that we purchase from Caldwell Country. They're in Caldwell. It is four hundred dollars more than the one in Maybank, but Maybank is a lot farther away than Caldwell. And then it is over three thousand dollars less than the one bid from Hinson. So I just ask the board to approve us purchasing that Suburban from Caldwell Country based on the quote they gave us.
For clarification, I know the sheet from the Teague Maybanks didn't have all the details on it like it did on the other two bids. I'm assuming that we gave them the specs that we wanted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Just didn't have anything. I'm assuming that we made the purchase of the twenty twenty Suburban, Chevy Suburban from Caldwell Country.
Second. Second by Redd. Any discussion? Okay, does it favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh. Item number ten, we are going to go into closed session under five five one zero seven four at seven twenty. Session. The last thing on here requires actions to superintendent salary, consideration of superintendent salary. We discussed a closed session, what we wanted to do there. So we entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we increase the salary by fifty-five hundred dollars, which is take it to one hundred, one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars annual salary.
A second. Okay, motion, second. Any discussion? Okay, does it favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh.
Thank you.
I've moved to adjourn. Second by Redd. Does it favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six oh.